Good evening, I would like to call this meeting to order, the inaugural meeting of council. Please rise and remain standing. We acknowledge that the land on which we meet is the traditional territory of the Hodnoshoni, Anishna Beck, Adewandirank Nutro, and Mississauga peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We also recognize that this land is now home to the Muncie Delaware Nation, Chipawas of the Thames First Nation, and Oneida Nation of the Thames. This land was settled through Treaty Number Two, the McKee Purchase Treaty of 1790, and we, as beneficiaries of the treaty, recognize our collective responsibilities to the land and water. I will now call upon Ms. Stephanie Brown to sing "Oh, Canada." Thank you, please be seated. At this time, I would like to declare the results of the 2022 municipal election for city council as follows. For the office of mayor, Joe Preston, with 5,526 votes. For the office of councillor, and they are seated in this order, crossing the room, Steve Peters, 7,385 votes, Steve Wookiee, 5,564 votes, Jeff Kohler, 5,253 votes, Laurie Baldwin-Sands, 5,057 votes, Gary Clark, 4,811 votes, Jim Herbert, 3,521 votes, Rose Gibson, 3,266 votes, and Tara McCauley, 3,101 votes. At this time, Mayor Joe Preston will publicly subscribe his declaration of office and oath of allegiance.
I, Joe Preston, having been elected to the office of mayor in the city of St. Thomas d'Ussault, we promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, impartially, and exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received, nor will not receive, any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance to the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and I will faithful, I will be faithful and bear truly allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III. And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
At this time, I would like to call upon all the councillors to rise and publicly subscribe their declaration of oath of office and oath of allegiance in unison.
I, Rose Gibson, have been elected to the council in the city of St. Thomas to publicly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and partially exercise this office to address my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in my honest, corrupt, or improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, correct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest. I will be faithful, very obedient to His Majesty, King Charles III. And I make this solemn promise, declaration, and oath, as we believe in it, who know me as same or as better.
Please. I will now call upon Pastor Jeremy Best to present a charge to the council.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of council, Mr. Mayor. It's my privilege and pleasure to be with you tonight just to share a few brief words. And as I do, I want to take you back to a story, an old story from Scripture in the Old Testament, about a queen named Esther. During the time of exile, when the Jewish people had been captured first from the Kingdom of Babylon and then the Kingdom of Persia, and were in slavery to the Kingdom of Persia. This takes place around 486 to 464 B.C., there was a king named Xerxes I over Persia. The story tells us that the king conducted a nationwide search for a new queen after finding displeasure in his current queen. He had his servants bring to him women from all corners of the kingdom, and one in particular, he discovered Esther, a young Jewish woman who had been amongst the slaves captured in Jerusalem when the city was ransacked by the Persians. She was being raised by her uncle, a man named Mordecai, as both of her parents had been killed in that capture. She was taken to the capital and taken through a year-long process that eventually led to her being chosen as the new queen. During that time, as Esther was being prepared to become queen, her uncle Mordecai discovered a plot being raised up by one of the king's men named Haman. The plot was to put the Jewish people to death. In Esther, Chapter Three, Verses Eight and Nine, says this. "Then Haman said to the king, There is a certain people scattered abroad and dispersed amongst the peoples in all your provinces, of all your kingdom. Their laws are different from those of every other people, and they do not keep the king's laws. So it is not the king's profit to tolerate them. If it pleases the king, let it be decreed that they be destroyed." Haman's plot was to have all the Jewish people in the Kingdom of Persia murdered. The king agreed, giving Haman his signet ring so that an official letter could be sent through all the provinces for that to happen. That letter stated that twelve months from that day, all the Jewish people were to be killed. What neither the king, nor his servants, nor Haman was aware of was that Queen Esther herself was a Jew. Mordecai found out about the plot and was eventually able to get word to Esther. Esther being in the king's court wasn't obviously publicly available. But Mordecai would go daily to the courts, stand by the gates, and plead for an audience with her, and eventually was able to get word for her and spoke to her, pleading with her to do something to save her people. And Esther, even Esther as queen, could not simply go and talk to the king. She could only go on his invitation, only at his command. To do anything else would be to put her life at risk. And even where she'd be given audience with the king, she certainly couldn't tell him how to run his affairs, and she certainly could not make a request for how the country should be led. But Mordecai pled with her and he talked with her. He said to her this famous verse in Esther, Chapter Four, Verse 14. "Who knows whether you have not come to the kingdom for such a time as this?" Those words and what Esther would do after are still commemorated by the Jewish people to this day in the Feast of Piram, because Esther would indeed go and request an audience with the king, and Esther would indeed plead for the freedom and the saving of her people which was granted her by the king. It's an odd story maybe to point out at the first meeting of council. But those words, "for such a time as this," have stuck out to me since our mayor invited me to come and speak. I've called St. Thomas home for nearly fifteen years now. Moved here, Sarnia's home, and my wife and I came here by way of Hamilton after serving in a church there for five years. And when we moved here, it was the spring of 2008, just as the recession was beginning to take its full grip. In those early years, Ford, Sterling, Timken, and others would all close, and our city began to feel a bit of ghost town. The vibe around here, as you might say, was low. For several years, the city felt as if it was on life support. But things slowly began to change, didn't they? New jobs began to arrive slowly at first, and that pace picked up, and new people began to arrive. And at first, it trickled, you'd hear stories from people from London moving down to St. Thomas, and eventually those stories became talking about people from Waterloo and Kitchener, and then the GTA, and how was building went from, you know, I'd see in my own neighborhood Orchard Park, one or two homes being built at a time, to all of a sudden entire streets going up in the span of several months. What first became a trickle has become a stream, and has now been a flood. Our city is changing rapidly, and us at our church of faith in St. Thomas have been saying to our people, I've been the lead pastor of faith now for just a few months. I was the youth pastor there for the past fourteen years. And what we've been saying to our people, we've been praying with our people, is that we believe that God has called us to this city for such a time as this, that the city is changing rapidly beneath our feet, and that He has placed us in the position He has with the resources we have to do a work and to take care of people in a new way. And I believe firmly that God has placed this council in this city, in this chamber, for such a time as this. The challenges our city faces are many, but the opportunities are also great as well. I believe firmly that you are here for such a time as this, and that God is going to do something amazing in and through you in this city. We are excited about what lies ahead, we are excited about all that St. Thomas is, can, and will be. And I want you to know that the community of faith throughout your city supports you, prays for you, and is ready to lift a hand and pick up the shovel to get to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I have a motion that we express our sincere appreciation to Pastor Jeremy Best and to Stephanie Brown. Need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Councillor Herbert, seconded by Councillor Wookiee.
Questions or comments? See none, all open page.
So you know, along with our appreciation, we've made a donation to the In Out of the Cold and to the, our food bank on behalf of each of you for what you were able to do for us tonight. Thank you.
At this time, Mayor Joe Preston will present his inaugural address.
Well, thank you. It's quite fun to be here. This is certainly the second time I've had to stand in front of a group of citizens and a new council, but it's pretty exciting. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of the citizens of St. Thomas. After this election, we are so pleased that you sent us here to do the work, as Pastor Best has said, to do the work of the great work needed to be done in this city. Thank you. I want to thank all of the volunteers in the city of St. Thomas, those that also give their time. May not serve here, but give their time to make St. Thomas a better place. I am remiss if I didn't thank all of the families that I see in front of me and the rest of the families of this group that work so hard to become councillors and part of this council. Thank you to the families that helped push us and helped us get there. To all of the other candidates that ran in this race, and it was as pleasant and as good a group as I've ever been associated with, and we said this at many all candidates meetings. I take that whole group, and we could do great things with it, but this is the group that's been elected. So could we please ask those other candidates, put your heart into St. Thomas still, and help us make St. Thomas a better place, and come to us if you need help. We'll be certainly there to help you do it. To our St. Thomas team, to the city of St. Thomas, the hundreds of employees and directors that this community has, that over this last term of council, and now going forward, will continue to do the hard work that a great staff in a city does. It is as good as you could possibly think. I keep talking about adult supervision, so I'll stop. To this council team, certainly to the last council team, I wanted to say thank you again to Joan Rymo and to Mark Burgess, who decided at the end of that last council not to re-enter the race and stay with us. The work that they did in the last four years, or most of four years, Mr. Burgess joined us partway through, was equal to the task, and so thank you. And also, since that last first day of council, we had sitting in these chairs Mark Tinlin and Linda Stevenson, two other great members of parliament, but not through their choice did they leave, but they passed on during the last council, and I, and it is, I miss them both dearly. Both were great advisors to me in my first term, and so thank you, Mark, thank you, Linda. Steve Peters, what a friend. I mean, we've, I was trying to think today, Steve, what year we went back to, but I'm going to say your first term as mayor almost, and my first appearance in St. Thomas. But since then, we got to be really this strange friendship, and it's not strange between the two of us, but it was always strange between others watching us. I was a conservative member of parliament, and Steve was a liberal member of provincial parliament. And we'd be called out by people in a restaurant, "What are you two doing sitting together?" Right? And Steve would answer, I would answer, "We're making St. Thomas a better place, and if we can sit here and pick the goals that St. Thomas need, we can do it better." So Steve, thank you for doing that and staying here now and doing the same thing. Look, I look at both, I have two former mayors on this council, and I get exceptionally good advice. Steve Wookiee, Steve, you did something else even above special when Linda had passed away and this council needed to stay on the direction it was doing. And we, after, after being opponents in the last election, went to you and said, "Steve, we need what the strength that you brought to the last council, we need it back here." Right? Well, I think the people of St. Thomas said, "Way to go, too." Because look where we're sitting today, and I thank you for your hard work and great guidance, too. Jeff Kohler, well, I don't know, we became friends at twelve, I think, it's a long time ago. And in, outside of politics, but very good friends, and the guidance that Jeff offers me also as mayor makes this council have a different type of glue than a lot of councils may have, is the fact that we, we're almost like a family at the Thanksgiving dinner. We may occasionally say, "You're not correct," but we won't leave the room saying, "And you're bad." We'll do great things. Laurie, Laurie Baldwin-Sands has been such an integral part. You returned in this last council to be, to be, to help St. Thomas move forward in growth and to do some of the great things we're doing. We could not have done it without you sitting here at this council, too. We thank you, and I look forward to some glorious things we can accomplish in this next four-year term with the, with the strength and power we have. Gary Clark, I got to know Gary, I did not know Gary much before this last council. But we, we did some neat things at this council, and I could always count on Gary asking some of the questions that needed to be asked about budget and looking forward for keeping the citizens of St. Thomas in a great place. And then Gary and I got to travel to AMO and some other, you know, these neat municipal conferences that you go to and you don't stop working, but I learned the real Gary Clark, and what his care for was for St. Thomas, so thank you very much. I'll skip over Jim Herbert, I will not. Jim and I joined municipal politics at the same time, in the last council, and I was so glad Jim was here, because Jim will ask the question I wanted to ask, and many other councillors wanted to ask, and we got more things done because we weren't willing, we weren't not willing to say, "What's best? What does that mean? How do we get there?" Perfect, thanks, Jim. And look who's new. I can't look at Rose and think of her as being new, but Councillor Gibson and I go back about a hundred years. You were only one, I was much older. Working, working together on community events and community projects, and, you know, it's one of those cases of, "I think I can, I think I can." And Rose, you can, did, and it's your chair now, right? Let's show St. Thomas how this really works, I just, I just love it. Tara, Councillor McCauley, again, we go back a few years now on business groups in town. I was a mentor and loved to work with the work that Tara was doing. I can only say, I pray a little, but I got my dream team. I asked for what could we get that would be the best to move St. Thomas forward in the way we were doing so, and what new, what else we can do. Look, this is it, this is as good as it gets from a, from a council. We will have a hard time messing this up, folks, so let's, let's work together to make it work. But as Pastor Best said, St. Thomas continues to have this incredible growth spurt. And it's up to us, it is up to this council, the old council and the new council, to commit to a plan, and we have. We said, "Let's move this city forward in the right direction. Let's create all the assets a city needs to have and fix the old ones. Let's create new jobs. Let's do all of the facilities that a city of our size would be proud of. Let's set our priorities and do, move forward." Well, the priorities included in our plan starts with housing, and it is such a large part of what this council has to do and what we showed in the last council we could do. What was possible. A commitment from this council and the previous council is guidance and assistance to increase housing in the city of St. Thomas. At a time when growth is beyond maybe where it should be, we must find homes for all that can come join us. I've committed to, and this council, we will talk about in our new strategic plan or the continuation of our old plan, the building of 500 new homes a year over the course of this council. And it doesn't mean all single-family housing. 500 units includes supportive housing, which this council, the previous council, has done and is doing under the new council. Supportive housing is housing for people who are currently homeless or at least underhoused, and comes with it with supports. The supports are mental health and addiction support, health support, housing support. And by using Indwell as a, as a, as a group going forward, we know we can accomplish a greater level of supportive housing during our term. I would love for us to meet our Built for Zero goals on homelessness. That means zero homelessness, effectively none left. I'd love to meet that this term of council, and I will challenge this council to meet it in the first two years of this council. See, can we do it? Can we get to Built to Zero here in St. Thomas? 500 units also include vastly increased accessory units, that is, using the existing housing in St. Thomas and building accessory homes and apartments in those units to bring safe and affordable housing to those that need homes in our community. And it's going to be a big part of that 500. 500 units a year includes market rent apartments. It's the attraction that this council, the previous council, was able to do to attract large apartment builders to our community and say, "Let's have at it, and let's continue the process, and we can and will." And then, of course, we have the, probably the greatest group, and it will be shown again this week at the Golden Hammer Awards, the greatest group of home builders that a city could ask for across our province. This is where we have the best. So we will use single-family homes and the growth for them, too, as a way of meeting not just single-family homes, but duplexes and townhouses and the other housing that comes in the subdivision that our, that our builders are working on. This city will commit to any land that it already owns, any land it can accumulate, and we're going to go out and ask all we can, whether it's churches and service groups and already owned by other developers in this community. How much of this land can we turn into housing in our community? And we need to make that commitment that we do that. The next big thing that this, this council has to work on and the city must have is full employment. We currently have a number of jobs in our, in our, in our community. We must strive for full employment. When all who are capable of work are working, we're a more successful community. We're at unprecedented time where there's a thousand jobs in St. Thomas going wanting, where there's, where there's equal to that amount of people who are unemployed. We must, as a council, become the mechanism that makes that work together, and we will. With our large land acquisition, in order to grow great new jobs in our community, we've got to prove to anybody who will come to start a new business in St. Thomas that we have the employment base that they will need to do those jobs. So let's, let's work together on that. As the fastest-growing city in southwestern Ontario, we must act like where we want to be and not where we have been. We, this, this means that this council must fulfill our destiny and achieve smart growth in our city with the assets that are available to it. I look forward to this team taking the assets of our city to a great new level. The budget process and the budget process during this term of council, it will be, it will be said, I hope, that they looked ahead, they saw the future, and they went there. They looked forward, and no one was left behind. And they looked forward to find the best ways to grow, using all of the partners that we have in this city, and we will help lead, but we need lots more partners in our city, and certainly the other levels of government. I thank you all for allowing me to share where our vision, not just mine, our vision of where this council, Believe City, can be at the end of this term and four years. Thank you.
I have a motion that the inaugural address of His Worship Mayor Joe Preston be received and referred to council for consideration and recommendation. Moved by Councillor McCauley, seconded by Councillor Gibson. Your Worship, just one final bit of business. At this time, I have a motion relating to the appointment of bank signing officers. The motion is as follows, that we authorize the following signing authorities for all city of St. Thomas accounts and all Ontario Works accounts at the Bank of Nova Scotia, 472 Talbot Street, and the Royal Bank, 1099 Talbot Street, St. Thomas, respectively. The mayor, together with the city treasurer, and signatures may be written or engraved. The mayor, together with the city treasurer, and signatures may be written or engraved, lithographed, printed, or otherwise reproduced. Moved by Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Wookiee. Before the motion for adjournment is presented, we would like to invite all those in attendance to join us for refreshments in Committee Room 304, just around the corner from the council chambers. Your Worship, at this time, I have a motion for adjournment. Moved by Councillor Baldwin-Sands, seconded by Councillor Herbert.